...Treasurer and Mayor. At the end of the meeting, a recent addition to the agenda is that we are going to go into a closed session with regard to a personnel issue. If anyone's unfamiliar with what that means, it means everybody leaves, and we'll have that discussion. And then we'll come back into a public meeting as we'll come to an end. So, why don't we just get started. Peggy Ralph is... First of all, thanks for all of your coming. I don't know if this is a 50% off TV sale, or lynching, or welcome to the new council, or whatever, but it's heavily crowded. Peggy Ralph of the Senate Court is going to swear in first the new members of the town council who should have come out and stand here. And then we'll have the Treasurer sworn in. And then we'll have the new Mayor Fred Caplan. So if the newly elected council members, many of whom are right up here, would be fine enough to stand up front so Peggy can swear you in and take photographs of Peggy.
Do you have a word?
No.
You're going to ask all of you after I swear you in as a group. You have oath here for this on the line, and I'll take care of the rest tomorrow. You will swear that you swear the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully, impartially discharge all the dues that comes upon you as members of the town of Washington, Virginia.
Yes.
Newly elected Treasurer.
You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully, impartially discharge all the dues that comes upon you as Treasurer for the town of Washington, Virginia.
Thank you.
And next, I'm delighted, swearing in of our new Mayor Fred Caplan. A small point, just to test your follow-up. These things are not really effective to January 1st, right? In terms of whatever.
I have a sense he'll be clinging until...
No, after tonight, buddy. This is the end.
The court order will say that.
The court.
The beginning date and ending date.
Right. I defer them. However you want.
You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully, impartially discharge all the dues that comes upon you as Mayor of the town of Washington, Virginia.
I will. For those of you may recall, we switched the election from May, where it had been for, I don't know how many years, to coincide with the general election November. And something like two and a half times more people turned out for the election, which of course was the idea. But interestingly though, something like, I think it was almost like 70, 75% of the registered voters turned out. Which is a very, very high percentage, so that's... The Mayor, in his somewhat last act, I wondered if you would indulge me. Beverly and I came to this county in the early 1980s, and we bought a house in 1986 on Poe's Road. And we were weekenders, and we hung out like weekenders do, or at least used to do. We kept quiet and just did whatever. And I used to read about it in newspapers. And all I read about was conflict and confrontation and fractiousness and anger and all kinds of things, the town of Washington. And I thought to myself, my God, who would want to live in this town? Much less who would want to serve in local government? So here we are, what, 32 years later or something, I'm here as my last moment, roughly speaking, as Mayor, and having lived in the town for 11 or 12 years, better than not. I spent most of my career watching politics in the Bay of Washington. And it's only because Gene Leggett, when we moved to this town, Captain Spoller, Gene Leggett, a tremendous gentleman and man and leader, kind of conned me over drinks one night into Ryan's Rock. And without thinking much about it, I did it. It was one of the best decisions I'd made. The switch to being actually actively involved in government as opposed to watching, albeit on a very small stage. It's a very small pond that we live in here, but it's our pond, and we love this pond. And working with people, all of you in this room, and others who are no longer here, has been extremely... has had a powerful impact on me, and given me a tremendous sense of satisfaction. Following in Gene's footsteps, we did our best to continue having a sense of community where people work together with mutual respect, honored each other, could argue, have different opinions, even get grumpy with each other. But at the end of the day, there was enough openness and trust that we got a lot accomplished. And I want to thank all of my colleagues who are all the council, but also people such as Gary Schwartz and others that were here back, particularly in the days of wastewater. I want to thank two people in particular, well, three people. I want to thank my wife, personally. I went back to her first, not last. The number of nights or meetings I go to, and she'd say, "Where have you been? What are you doing? What's happened? What's it all about?" And I'd say, "Do you really want to hear about Section 231-8R, about blah, 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 and this and that?" Like, just clear this room stuff. But she's been very, very supportive. John Bennett, as the town's lawyer and counsel for 20 or so years, maybe more, has essentially seen it all. And he has been a tutor, maybe, he's been extremely helpful, has guided me through a lot of issues that were at times challenging. And I'm grateful in depth, too. Appreciate the thing. Then is Laura Dodd. I wrote in my notes, I have notes right here, and I thought, Laura Dodd, let's put Laura Dodd. You most don't have to say anything. We owe no Laura Dodd. She is as committed to this town as any human being. There's no task too small for her to deal with. She has been loyal, she has been good, and I love her dearly. And one of the things I will miss, I don't know about them, is walking around town, frankly, generally in the middle of the street. I never did like sidewalks. Laundering around town, and just talking about what needed to be done, and, you know, Mrs. Button's birthday is coming up, let's do flowers, a pothole needs to be fixed, someone's complaining about this and that. Laura has just been steady all the way through. As we've been recently reminded with George Bush's funeral, there's something in the history and the tradition that outgoing presidents write little handwritten notes in the White House desk for their successor. Well, I'm surely not a President of the United States, and we don't even have a mayor's office, much less a mayor's desk in which to put notes to Fred. So, I'm going to just offer a couple of observations to Fred, but really to everybody. I've always thought, you know, people are very nice, they say, "You're Mayor, Mayor for this, blah, blah, blah." And many times, maybe I just make decisions on my own without really asking people. But by and large, I would like to think that we have operated in a collegial fashion. And that we're all guided by the notion that there's a certain neatness about this village and this county. The town and the county. And there's so much to protect here, and it's the responsibility of all of you going forward to continue to do that. One of the things that always frustrated me from some critics, it would say, "Oh, the town so-and-so, they want to become like Aspen, they want to become like Carmel, they want to become like Millburn." I always thought that was the stupidest comment I've heard. It was silly. Who would want this town to be Aspen, Colorado? So I feel like you just go there if you want to, if that's what you want. It is the recognition that we're in a very special place, and we want to preserve it as it is, recognizing there's got to be change. And it's a job of every single person in this room, not just Fred, not just the newly-elected council. As far as I'm concerned, it's a job of everybody in this room that cares about this town to continue to participate and work together. And I think, without stating the obvious too much, in a country, indeed a county, where they're... where it's so fractious, and what passes for government, people have trouble working together and getting things done. And we've got something here that works. It's very small, but it works. And it's fragile. And it's easy to go off in different directions and lose that sense of civility and comity and common purpose. So I urge you to protect what we die of. And there are going to be a lot of big issues that this town faces going forward. And I hope those issues, as they are debated, bring people together rather than divide people. And that folks work together. I have a sense, I can't say every minute has been a pure joy. And whether it's tedious or it's lawsuits, it's not been all perfect. But that's the way it goes, right? No one said it's going to be perfect. But I have a pride, sense of pride in what we've accomplished together. And the last thing I would say, and I've said it, I've said it in the paper, I say it everywhere, is every so often, somebody says, "Well, where are you guys going? What's happened?" And my answer is, "We're not going anywhere. The only way we're leaving that house is Saturday and Speaker Day, the fire department, she's the one's going to be taking us out of that house, nobody else." And we will be active and involved in this community as much as we can without, hopefully, getting in people's way. And the last thing I will say is that I have already set up a speed dial system on my phone, so when someone calls at 10:30 at night, they got some problem, they want to solve, speed dial, straight to Fred. So for that, I thank you all, it's been a great ride. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to say that on behalf of members of the town council, we want to have you and Jerry around just a little bit more, and we want to ensure that you are here till the 31st. Therefore, we're going to have a little presentation in your honor at the January meeting, and we invite both you and Jerry to be there, please, for the beginning part, because we want to give you another meeting of honor and recognition.
But you didn't have to be in charge.
No, at all. And you have to keep your mouth full.
All right. I guess on the Monday. Oh, wait a second. Joe? Would you come here, please? We have a small tradition. Years ago, Beverly and I bought a bunch of hats in Camden, Maine, that said Washington, Virginia. And over time, they've been given out to people on the council and the planning commission. So you've got your new hat.
Thank you.
And if there's anybody who hasn't gotten one... Gail, did you get one?
Yeah.
Do you remember that one?
No.
Sorry, man. Sorry. Got one hat left. Anybody in the government that's done that one?
I'll take it, Joe.
Now, you know what we're going to do? I'd like you to get this to Nancy Bunkner. There's no responsibility to come to this.
Get Dad in the seat.
To, from whatever to the Monday. The minutes from August 13th and September 10th. Any comments, questions?
I just had a couple dramatic things.
Okay. So you're going. Same here, Ross.
If anyone else has, if anyone else has a comment? If not, I'll make a motion to approve them.
On favor?
Aye.
Is that August 13th?
Yes.
Okay. And then September 10th?
Same thing.
Same thing?
I make the same.
On favor?
On second.
Treasurer's report. I'm going to do this quickly, you can all read it. Consolidated assets, $436,000 in the general account, 15 grand in waterworks, 1,500 in wastewater. The town income for November is very high, at that time of year, $42,000, meals and lodging, six for water, and 11 for wastewater. Any questions?
I should point out that that is a 35% increase over the last month.
The meals and lodging?
Yes.
It's fine. So it's a very high number.
Yes.
But the end may be higher, what's something to do?
Only 88% of this town.
Sounds good to me. These hat numbers should keep going up.
Well, it would imply that there's no reason to consider raising the...
All right.
You misinterpreted.
All right. Any other comments? Or have a motion to approve?
What? You didn't vote?
Or did we already do it?
You need to ask Kevin questions about anybody else.
I don't have that from here. Okay. Any questions about...
Yes, that is my...
The only related side is the contribution to the Washington Fire Rescue. And that's really a pass for the number, that are...
No, that we... You have contributed $8,000.
The town contributes to the Washington Fire, 8,000 every year. And then it's also a pass for the 8,000 we get if somebody comes to the Washington Fire. Any questions? Motion approved? Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Planning Commission. Fred, you going to make it, or are you going to wait till...
We're going to wait till a little bit later in the meeting.
ARB, who's going to report? Talentary, Mr. Bennett?
Welcome.
Okay. Let's get to the substance here. I want to open up a public hearing to consider authorization and entry into a contract to sell the lot over the town of Washington at the intersection of Old Route 211, 522, 88.5853 acres, tax number 28, on 119. It's a purchase price of $135,000, so as to permit the construction of a new post office and related postal services in accordance with the terms of a contract dated November 8th from Mid-Atlantic Postal Properties. That contract has been public since the last meeting, was discussed there, but this is a public hearing on that subject. For those of you, since there are some new people here, or perhaps people haven't been recently, this contract is with Mid-Atlantic Postal Properties. This is a company that was in the business of developing post offices for the Post Department, Postal Department. They have done something like 25 or 30 locations in the greater Washington, Virginia area. They've done the interiors of that, I forget now, it's like 40. They've been working with the post office for 29 years. They know what works and what doesn't work. So we would be selling the property to them, they would be putting up a building on that location, something to postal demands, specifications, and then leasing it to the post office. So that's a quick headline version. Any public have questions, comments?
Before, if I recall, the contract's conditioned on some sort of representation for the postal service they will engage in at lease.
The contract has, I think it's a six-month, roughly John, study period, but the reality of the situation is that the post office has received already the proposal from a developer. They apparently, I want to be careful, they have not found problems with it. It is my understanding that contention on what happens tonight, that that proposal will go to, perhaps not already, the postal service management. And a decision would be made with regard to this particular proposal, as opposed to any other alternative out there, very quickly, possibly by the end of this year. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a proposal that meets the needs. It gives them a brand-new building, which they want, gives them all the parking they want, gives them access, it's not far from 211, and it is in the town of Washington, which is what most people so far have expressed strong support for. So, anyway, questions, comments? Charlie? And we know you, but not yet. Would you state your name and...
Charlie Tompkins. I'm the owner of the other side of the street, landowner from the property being discussed at. And I have to say that I oppose this idea. I think that this adequate parking is an absurd assumption. The parking, if you ever been at the post office and seen the come and go that comes there on that side of the street, a couple of the mail trucks, I think would be an incredible burden. And I'd also like to comment that I've heard it said from a number of sources about how the town council has approached me about it. And I have to say, nobody from the council has approached me about it. If you had, you would know that I have some developed brands, my own, for that property, which may well accommodate a much better traffic flow than I would envision at that
Thank you. Other guests?
My name is Craig Lucy. I'm Charlie's developer partner. I've leased his property for 99 years. It's 14 acres. The property of the post office in the private parking lot is half acre. So Charlie's property is 28 times that size. The part of Charlie's property, which is about half, which is in the county, but for a special exception, is already approved for a post office. What I do is assisted livings. We're the highest rated in the state of Maryland. We want to bring assisted livings to Washington, Virginia. Incredible draw to come visit the grandmother, grandfather, and have a wonderful meal, or several meals, and say, "Oh, this town is an incredible draw for assisted living." Our ratio of employees, who are mostly young people, is more than the residents. So if we can put easily six bungalows on Charlie's property with the post office, with also small museums, what we have planned currently, you're talking about seminary people, young people, who, you know, would be working there around the clock to greatest source of income. I haven't read everything about the town, but you all are trying to grow, trying to grow your young base. And we've been talking to Charlie for a while, nothing else from development. He's the only developer up in DC. So, again, not a lot of time to meet people, but because of this meeting, because of this proposal, parking the cars that currently want to park in the post office and build a building on a half acre with weapons behind it, which are not going to change, on a site that's got a lot of filter and trash there, and we haven't had time to research that, is not a great option now from a perspective of the town. $135,000 goes a long way for sewer and water and all those things you need. We're perfectly prepared to buy the property, but not the post office there, put on Charlie's piece. See, this town still gets revenue for the property, but we want to bring a whole lot of people.
I'm confused. Did you say you're prepared to buy the property that we're offering the sale now currently to the post office?
Yes. If we get the right zoning for assisted living and museum for the post office on that property, then we don't want the town to lose out of income. We don't come in and do things by saying, "Hey, we wanted to do this instead." We're here for a long time because of the 99 groundings. We're here because of what's been created by the town. And that's what we think would be the great next step, again, being the highest rated assisted living. To give you a sense of, do any of you know where Gibson Island is? In Maryland?
Yeah, both there.
Okay. So we build assisted livings around Gibson Island, very close to assisted living, to Gibson Island. A lot of those residents, we live on Gibson Island, a lot of those residents are in our assisted livings. But we're the highest rated in Maryland, by the state of Maryland. We do things one way, we do them extremely well. And that's really why we're here today, to say, you know, let's not put the post office on a property that won't fit, and go for your studies, time to work. They're going to see what the builder is. And it's, you know, the traffic, it's just, you know, you can't fit it and fit the parking. People are gonna be up and down the road. Charlie's got fourteen acres. And there's plenty of room for the post office, plenty of room for the assisted livings, and plenty of room for a museum about his family's building, which built most of DC, both wings of the White House. The reflecting pools, the CIA, anything. So there's, there's a lot of things. It's a bigger plan. But we kind of rushed down here and stopped doing some things because of this meeting is happening. We just saw what was, what was going on, so.
So you have a proposal?
Absolutely, I have a proposal.
A written proposal?
Didn't have time to prepare a written proposal. Again, I just heard about the meeting. We have a rear ground lease. It took a while to get that done, so. But again, when, when we sat down and said, it's being sold, okay? When you said the rent of the town, that's not a big deal with regard to the development. Again, to get assisted living there seems to match what the town's plans are. Would be an incredible marriage with, with the inn, what the inn does. It's a great excuse to come down and visit somebody. We've got, one of my wife's relatives has a big place down in Charlottesville, so we haven't gone to Virginia yet, but this was a unique opportunity. We just didn't know we needed to hurry up this quickly, but we can get the proposal together quickly.
May I ask one other question?
As many as you like.
So I'm a little confused. So as an alternative to the spot that's picked for the post office now, you would like them to choose a spot in your development plan on Charlie's property?
Correct. So what we had heard was that everyone had talked to Charlie across the street. Actually, Charlie's ain't gonna talk to you. No one's talked to Charlie. So Charlie's got a lot of property across the street that has the parking, has plenty of parking.
Is that in conjunction with the assisted living?
Assisted living and a museum.
And a museum.
As I said, I don't know how many of you know, but Charlie's family built most of DC. The top construction family built most and developed most of DC, Crystal City. And so there's a, there's a massive amount of documentation about that. And we want to house it somewhere long-term.
Sure. Do we have more questions? Or is there some other question?
I just was a little confused about your plans for the usage of the property now by the town across the street. Do you use that for assisted living and the post office on the other side? Or do you not yet have a plan for...
I heard about that this evening. A hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars should not go to the town of Poppers. Should go to the town of Poppers. I don't know, given the wetlands behind it. Someone needs to drill for a new well. On Gibson Island, we drilled three six-hundred-foot deep wells. I know an awful lot about septic. I did the Alexandria Zoo Authority expansion in Alexandria. I know a lot about drilling for wells.
Yes, it's on the water.
Excuse me?
It's on the water.
Right. No, I'm saying, another well would be...
So on the water.
On the water?
Yes.
Right. I'm not, I understand that, but I'm saying, does the town need more water than the well? I heard something about that?
Totally separate.
Okay. I'm just saying. I, I, I'm open to doing whatever on, on the land. We don't need it for the, for the job.
If I may...
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah, right.
This was advertised, you know, over a month ago. And I don't know that we've had anything come to the council on this before tonight. And then suddenly this is being put up. You know, why wasn't anything brought forward? You're talking about development plans. You have all this grandiose idea of what's gonna be done, but yet you have nothing to show. It's just a lot of conversation. Why wasn't anything done when this parcel was announced well over a month ago, that we were planning to sell?
And also, just to add on to that, there was at least one article in the papers that talked about this.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I don't live here and work the world, back and travel around the world. I just, again, heard about this situation. Charlie might have been working on a lease. We concluded the lease. But as far as why this proposal to buy this land is subject to a six-month subsidy, from a standpoint of being able to fit on that piece of property with the wetlands, and again, we've done a lot of developments.
May I just make an observation, Jim? If I may?
Oh, just to answer the question, yes.
Sure, sure.
No. You can't fit the parking that you need on that piece of property in the post office.
If I may make a couple of observations. I love the sound of you being interested in developing some assisted living in this county on Charlie's property. And there are a lot of people in this community who would like to see that on somebody's property, and Charlie's will be fine. I don't exactly understand how it is necessarily connected to location and post office. That's one point. But I love that people go forward, or there's a lot of great conversations about assisted living. With regard to your observation about the space being inadequate for the developer, I'm not an expert, but what I know is the developer has done twenty, whatever the number is, twenty-nine of these. He's worked with the post office. He's seen the property. He knows what the size is. He's worked out the logistics. There, to my understanding, is not an issue of wetlands back there. So we've got someone who is already talking with the post office, and they actually seem to be sort of happy with the idea, so maybe you're right, there's not enough space, but the guy we're dealing with who's been dealing with the post office twenty-nine years thinks it's adequate, and apparently they do too. And then just the third point. And I want to reemphasize the first one. We'd be delighted to talk with Charlie when you, I always say we, um, no longer, may or after two weeks, so no matter, about development and doing things in this community. But the issue of the location of the post office, this issue has been in the press for, I don't know, you could say five years or a year. And the location of it has been subject to a lot of articles along discussion. And if you, I guess what I would say is, if you had this, I wish you might have approached us sooner.
First, I want to congratulate you and the work that was done to make certain that this post office stayed in the community. And I believe the parking will be adequate. The parking issues in our present post office, a lot of them have to do with business at the Country Cafe and other offices right there in town. And I am absolutely convinced that due diligence was done by the developer. But mostly, I support this. And again, I want to commend you for the work that is done to making certain the post office remained in the county seat of the town of Washington. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Angel? I'm sort of shocked and astounded to hear the good news that somebody's interested in doing good things in our town. On the other hand, it's been at least six months. As you say, it could be five years, but actively, the conversation among all sorts of people in this community, from the time the gentleman from the postal service stood here, and we had that back-and-forth Q and A, that was all public record. From that day on, it's gone forward with multiple discussions about property across, from the bank, property across the street from the bank, property in this town, Dr. Martin's location. So this has been a fully fleshed-out, very transparent process. And it's a little dismay to arrive tonight at a public hearing with a contract on the table to authorize the town council to go forward to sort of now have a wrenching stop where we, you, have to apprise yourselves after this public hearing what to do. Given the length of the study period that's in the contract, and the fact that it still is contingent that if the postal service says, nah, we don't want a post office there, as I understand it, the contract is void within a certain time period under certain conditions. So I stand in support of the current proposition, that that's, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that if a developer with that kind of expertise says, we're willing to go forward, sign a contract, go to the postal service and see if we can't make this work, that's good enough for me. I, I would say go forward with the current contract. If the postal service turns it down, or if the developer discovers there's some reason it can't go forward, then it'd be nice to have a backup possibility queued up, ready to go to council. But I don't see, given all the work that's been put into this, that this is the evening to say, stop. I think you should go forward, accept the contract, let the study period run, let the postal service decide what they want to do, see if we can't get a post office that's good for everybody on that site.
Thank you.
John, on this contract from this developer and the post office...
That's a little louder.
On the contract, the developer and the post office, they have this contingency. What, what would you estimate would be the real time other than six months? I mean, does the six months started whenever it started? And it probably won't go six months.
Well, six months is outside the...
Right.
If the post office ever indicates that they're not gonna pursue this piece of property, the contract stops, then we can go back on the market. And all I can say that I've seen of process thus far is it's moving very rapidly. And it seems it's the management that makes the decisions, so considering that, I think the indications are, although I don't, first time I've ever worked on a post office. So we're gonna have an answer very soon.
May I answer that as well?
Sure.
It is my understanding from the developer that if we were to pass and approve this contract tonight, that there would be a likely decision from the post office within a matter of weeks, weeks, as to whether they wanted to do this alternative or not. That is, of course, contingent on us agreeing to to sign the contract, or we signed it, but to... They, this is a, they are in a move as... Given we've been discussing the post office situation for five years in one way or another, they are in a move really quickly mode. And the developer is, and the post office is. So if it should turn out that for some reason the post office should reject the idea based perhaps on your view or others, then we would find ourselves in a situation in the not-too-distant future with looking for application or, you know, accepting it goes on the town. Yeah.
When it was advertised, was the contract, that detailed the contract in the paper? Again, I didn't see what was specified.
It could be advertised by reference and summarizing it. The purchase price was summarized at twenty-three-five thousand dollars. And it was contingent on the location of a postal facility. So I think that states the main points of...
I'm just saying, as far as the engineering study, how much the developer actually did as far as what's there, how much this land is parked on, how many cars can it park, I mean, all those things. I've done a few post offices.
If the developer were here, I'm sure he'd lay out exactly the answer. So, I mean, it's been, it's been given to the post office.
Craig, can you just tell me about this?
Lucy, L U S S I.
And you say that there's inadequate parking? How much parking does this proposal have, and how much do you think it should have?
If you have a, a new post office filled in that property, and you only have a half acre, the whole property's half acre, given what you have on there for wetlands, given all the...
Excuse me, if there's not wetlands on the property, that's, that's really wrong.
Given the slopes, and given what's been filled in there, given, do you start at acre post office, what you're gonna find?
That didn't answer my question. I wanted to know how much parking you think should be there.
How much, as a post office, I'd imply half, two and a half, three acres. I've got a part for the big trucks, for all the people moving in and out.
In a town of less than two hundred people? There are other post offices in other towns around, in the town.
The post office serves more than the town residents.
Right, it absolutely does. However, it's survived on four or five spaces.
And there's no traffic in the post office now? I'm trying to make it better. I'm trying to make it worse, by the way.
No, I get that, but...
We, we weren't trying to get rid of the revenue for the, for the county selling property either. So again, I apologize for coming in. What you all appear is late.
No, I think it's a good question. It was, I'm not sure that you have, have you been here before?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you have a little idea of the town area.
In Carolina, in the town. I'm a little confused by this bundling of the post office and the assisted living. I think we all are intrigued and interested by the idea of assisted living, and it's been discussed. But the success of assisted living isn't dependent on co-communication with the post office. And presumably, and neither vice versa. So could we not separate out the issue of the post office from the assisted living? Because the post office across the street is not going to threaten any plan for assisted living. So are you saying the assisted living plan has to have a post office with it?
Doesn't have to have a post office, but assisted living, the way we do them, it's a, it's really, we have high school, middle school kids coming in to serve meals at night. It is, it is, you know, we try to bring as many community things together so that the seniors aren't isolated. They're part of the community. I built the Swedish Embassy on the banks of the Tomic. You go to Sweden, Stockholm, the seniors and the little kids are in the middle of town. And everyone else goes to work. And, I mean, they take care of it. So it's a very much a community. A post office, at some point, everyone in town and out of town comes to the post office. It's a good community event. I was just trying to get more room. When I looked at the, all the things this is doing, it's generating money for the town, it's keeping the post office in town. Let's give them more parking. I'm prepared to sit down and talk to the developer about, here's another alternative. Take two alternatives. Not trying to stop it, trying to say there's a much better alternative. And we want the people with the seniors. The seniors want to walk over to the post office, those that depend. Maybe they'll walk or see people they know. We're very community-oriented. And the museum is just another piece there. It's another potential attraction. So it's fourteen acres. The post office right now, but for special exception, can go on the county side of Charlie's property. You all actually control the town side of Charlie's property. You can do, you need to do for, to get the assisted living there. So, you know, it's not a hard thing to do, and I'm not trying to stop it. I'm just saying there's another alternative. But this is the time to say something. So that's why we're saying something.
I would just say, if I may, sorry, to step on a term. It's not that they're connected necessarily, but if we're gonna develop the fourteen acres, you have an opportunity there to have what I think is a much better solution than the one you're proposing to do.
Mr. Lucy, if I can ask just two questions. And I want to make clear. In the plans that you all have looked at, do you have a post office within the town component of Mr. Tompkins' property, or in the county component of his property?
Well, we're not here tonight with a full, long plan. This is gonna have to be discussions about, you know, the way that whole property would be realized.
Sure.
And we're only here tonight to say, since we're having those discussions, that a post office, what I think is a better solution for the post office could be a part of those discussions.
And I appreciate that.
Definitely open to that.
I appreciate that.
The path of least resistance is in the county because the zoning in the county allows a post office with a special permit.
It'd be the same for the town if the town approves the motion.
I didn't want to speak to the town. I'm just saying.
There's no, there's no, there's no, there's no proof, special permit in the county at this point.
Since, since we want to try to give you as best an idea as possible, I don't know the exact language, but from what I understand, the town of Washington has the longest existing continuous post office in the United States in the town. And I think that's something that is very important to the people in the town. The, the second thing that I wanted to try to get some kind of sense of clarification on, and you may not be able to, and I respect what you're saying, Mr. Tompkins, that you may not be at that point yet, but you were talking about the post office being a community center. I think it would be a little bit, maybe intimidating is not the right word, but I don't want someone to feel they have to go into this assisted living community to go to their post office, rather than have a post office that might have an assisted living community nearby. rather than have a post office that might have an assisted living community nearby. So, I just bring that point up.
These are the 16 room-bed bundles that are separated, the post office would have its own drive-in. But again, it's a distance to walk, it's very easy, much like the rest of the town, trying to make the character of the town, so it's really no different. Same thing with the museum, these are not big, these are one-story.
And we would work with the town to satisfy the kind of concern.
Sure.
You know, that is just what I said before, if we're going to develop this property, which I would like to do, I think a better option than the one you're proposing is available.
But you would still go ahead with the assisted living idea if the post office is across the street? We are a very...
We're going to bring it, we're going to bring it to you, you're writing about that.
Postal service, postal service made the stuff. I say, you know, we love, we love the option now. I just want to be able to say, you know, the first time I met you all, which was, it's probably too, and I apologize, we offered to buy the land, because we're going to take the money from the county and put it on, give more parking. I'm not saying you have to do it or stop it. But Charlie said, you know, you gotta stop traveling and come down here, we got this meeting, and I said, I'll drop everything, come down to the meeting, so.
Were you very kind to drop everything, come down and...
You know what? We have locations, children's western centers, Gibson Island Sailing, forces next door, and that's why we're good at what we do from a, where location. We don't have, and just so you know, and I know you will know, the Inupiat's cabin. When I first went 15 years ago to the state of Maryland, I said, what's wrong with assisted living? They said, two things, food and labor. I said, okay, what's wrong with food? It says nutritious, but it's terrible taste. I said, I think we have that changed. We stole the chef in the Inupiat's cabin, come in and cook in our assisted living, except training everybody, because food's important three times a day. So, if we have, for the standards here, if we have good food, to be able to come down and visit and get incredible world-class food and this environment, that's an incredible draw for us, that's why you would consider it.
Here's where I'm just a teeny bit frustrated when it comes out, I apologize. I think a lot of people in this community would love an assisted community project. And there's been talk about it, and if Charlie wants to get involved with it and his land, I bet you'd find a lot of support and a lot of interest, and I assume it would take a rather longish period of time for it to all get worked out, but it might be terrific. However, what we're talking about right now is a location of a post office. And that post office is either going to be in this town, decided quickly, or odds are it's going to go down one way. There's a time limit on that. And the developer thinks the site is perfect. What do I know? Developer thinks it's perfect. Developer is giving it to the post office, they think it's acceptable. So, in terms of the guy developing it and the people that want to use it, at least to me, it kind of appears like it's a workable site. And I'm not saying more acreage on your place wouldn't be better, but we have sort of a time issue, and I think if the post office should decide, you know, promptly that they don't like this site, man, we'd be back to you so fast anymore, all right, let's try your idea.
Or the alternative is to say, this is the deal we can do here, and I had a talk with the developer, but I do this quite a bit, here's the deal we have here, as long as I match the deal, give you more parking, because again, I think there's a great benefit to the town, to congestion coming into the town, to not have it at that location, because of parking, I'd rather have it on a location where it's off the road and people can chat and talk and not be rushed, and get in other cars like they do, that's all.
Sir, being sort of an outsider, I would suggest that sort of separation of certain stating, keep the post office with the proposed plans, put a civic center in the assisted living area, and then resolve all the problems.
And a really good crosswalk is a signal so people get parked at six minutes, they want the post office.
You just said the really rotten word.
Very.
Will the people at the county offices be able to walk to the new, or the proposed site for the post office?
Well, I think the answer is, they're able to, it's sort of distant, it's not like the current post office, so they will choose to walk there or they will not. It's walkable, we put a trail down, we've just been talking about, hard to desire to have something in town that people can walk to, and it isn't running, it's a center. So, that's, you know, something same as being on Gate Street, which is where we originally were looking at, but it's, it sure as heck is not down by Union Bank.
Right.
But it's important that you have the additional parking there. I guess they're not going to be needing a park. Hey, Tom, good.
Hi, it's Sheila Reston. You know, Judy, Judy brought up a good point. Where the post office is right now, there are other offices and restaurants and everything around it, that adds to all the traffic and the congestion. The new place that you're saying that will work is not going to have other buildings around it, so they're not going to have that kind of traffic and everything. So, I think the parking is going to be adequate in the proposed location where you have it, and I think it'll work well. I think it'd be a win-win situation for the town with Mr. Tompkins' proposal to be doing something to enhance the population growth, for one thing, so I think we could have both.
And then again, not, not, I want to make things that are positive, just so everyone knows, from a water usage and from a parking usage, assisted livings use almost no parking, there's plenty of area parking for water usage.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we're all for assisted living, we're not talking about assisted living tonight, we're talking about location of post offices. We'd love to talk about assisted living and going forward, but that's, that's sort of, you know, the chaffiness is not what we're talking about.
Do I understand that the proposed post office is five acres?
No, 2.5 acres, 8.3, if you're technical.
As far as the proposal goes, I guess I'd rather have a bird in the hand and, you know, I had to say this, I've been with Charlie for years, but to me, if this was really a serious proposal, for people wanting a verbal commitment, they would come in with ideas and perhaps a plan showing how they want to do things, sort of an office museum that sounded like it looked like the White House or something, or reflecting on, I can't remember. I mean, they had six months, I remember writing a letter, three, four months ago, talking about the same situation. It seems to me if this, they have plenty of time to respond to this, and it seems to me that if I were the voice, perhaps I would just go along with the original proposal, rather than jeopardizing everything on a verbal commitment, that this is what we would like to do.
Any, anyone else? If not...
Steve, I'm Steve Krison, I'm Charlie's next-door neighbor, live on Long Avenue. I hear about the parking, about the parking, but we've touched very little on the trucks that come in and out of the post office. And our beer and soda nowadays is delivered on tractor-trailers, and I feel sure in the future that the postal contractor, the Amazon contractor, are using tractor-trailers to deliver. You have an idea that's been sprung on me all of a sudden here this evening. Take 30 days, table your public hearing, take 30 days, let these people get prepared, show you something. You need a bigger piece of property than a half-acre, for everything that makes a post office, some of the trucks, the public, all mixed together in that half-acre lot. John, when you talk about wetlands and that they're way beyond, I just...
Yeah, I like, I like to correct what I say.
Yeah, you get your boots on, come on down there with me.
I'd like to correct some of that.
But table this public hearing for 30 days, listen to this. It took the year to buy Avon Hall, then John Meltzer took a year to buy Avon Hall, and get that done, and we needed that for the sewer system. But table this public hearing for 30 days, consider this generous proposal a little bit further than to just put through it this evening. The gentleman brought up wells, and they're like, oh, it's on town, look, it's on town, look. All my life, we've talked about an alternative water system for the town. When I started out, we just had, out on Big Long Avenue, '82, we drilled the first well on the river, drilled another one in '92, had a flood in '95 that got in well number one, and the state said that wasn't even a 100-year flood. A 100-year, perhaps the 500-year flood could leave the town without a water source. For years, we've spoken of developing another well. We came, we got the Hugh, Larry Hugh, out of Front Royal, to drill six wells, we couldn't find much water, very, very limited gallons. Let's explore that a little further. Just don't act too hastily this evening. Give this, give this proposal a little time, give 30 days, come back to you. Thanks, sir.
I hope that you will move forward with this. I think it was stated well that the developer of the post office has put something before the postal commission, or whatever it's called, and it seems to be adequate. We'll have an answer in two weeks if it goes through. They're not going to wait forever on this, as we know, and so I hope very much you'll move forward, and since other people have spoken many times, I felt the need to, too.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up to the discussion. Council members, thoughts, questions?
I have a question. Because people are so adamant about keeping our post office in the town, I mean, that's the driving force, it's so gladdying. Is your proposal definitely, would it actually be in the town, or would it be in the county? I just want to clarify that.
Well, I try to learn something every day. The attorney for the county said it can be in either, it's easy. So, it does, no, I was simply trying to make it, make sure we get everything done, post office, assisted living museum, unfortunately.
But would the post office be in the town, part of Charlie's property?
It's provided with, if it's living, the county portion, or, or...
Perhaps, perhaps expand the town boundaries? Yeah, well, there's talk about it, as you know.
That was put in the town, so.
We're talking there about the development of this plan, and I'm sorry that you all think this is hasty, it's not, it's not been arrived at by trivia or whatever. Some of you may know, I've had health issues, and I haven't been able to push this forward as fast as I would like, but the, the vote that came tonight made us want to say something about it. And I'm not here tonight to talk about the whole development issue, the plan, there's a lot of if this, then that, whole bunch of that stuff, it bothers me, and we're not going to get that done tonight, and I don't even want to start that. All I'm saying is what I've said a couple of times, that if we get something going on these lines, I think a better option can be provided on my property than what you're considering.
Without the town losing benefits, eh?
Council members?
Question? I said I have no other questions.
I think we've done a lot of work on this. I mean, we've got the developer, we've bought the property, we've spent time with him. Considering the timing issues with postal service, the developer gave us a rough window on it, but he could actually have them in the new facility, you know, with all the approvals and such to be done. I think we should move forward, my feeling.
And I'm sorry, I apologize. Any other?
I feel that we have gone through a process, I'm sorry, because this sounds very exciting, but we are on a timeline. We had our initial proposal to the postal representatives turned down, which was somewhat surprising to us. We're now working on a limited timeframe, and unfortunately, we don't know what the length of that timeframe is. We're trying to catch up very quickly with getting a decision made quickly, and I think unfortunately, that has to drive a lot of our decision-making, because we, as several other people have said, we don't want to end up not having a post office in the town. And right now, the forces are working towards that occurring, unless we can do it quickly.
If I may just amend what you said, and I said it earlier, it is my understanding from the developer, that assuming we, if we were to pass the sale approved, and if we were to make the zoning changes tonight, there would be a decision by the postal management as to whether this site would work sometime within a matter of weeks, soon. And if we find ourselves in a situation where we say, like, actually, we need to study this, we need to think about, we need to do more for another two or three months, that post office is going to be down somewhere else.
Even one month?
Yeah, and so, Steve, I understand your, I understand there are issues that one needs to take time on, and not rush through. But I do want to state once again, this is a subject that, it's not a subject that arose tonight, and we have been discussing it at least the last minute, and it's not before. And there has been a lot of discussion, a lot of stuff going on, so it's not as if we're, you know, just, just doing it, nilly-nilly. And if it turns out that the post office doesn't like our idea, I'm sure we'll come back to you hands on knees, saying, how about your alternative? But I'm not sure, well, I didn't hear that, but I'm not sure that would even be an alternative for us, so. All right, do I have a, what do we, John, literally, a motion?
Motion to ratify the contract, dated November 8, 2018, heretofore executed by the mayor, certification by the council after this public hearing.
I made that motion.
You made that motion? Our second, I'm, so, roll call vote? Yes, Brad?
Yes.
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 I am staying.
Yes.
Wanting to reiterate, let's talk about the assisted living community, and anything else other than the postal. All right, we're now...
What's rejected, and what we have to talk about?
Well, that's all, you know, let's see. All right, let's have a joint public hearing with the planning commission on the issue of zoning, and planning has stayed in this agenda with the planning commission members.
So, I need to open a meeting of the planning commission, and 8:15?
Thank you, thank you. Fred, you have a little bit of those.
Yes.
All right. I would like to open, as well, the county council meeting in conjunction with the planning commission meeting. Thank you. First item is a public hearing. First item is a rezoning amendment to Article one dash four dash one of the town zoning ordinance to add subarticle K as follows. In quotes, K. Post offices and related postal services so as to permit by special use, post office and postal-related services in every zoning district of the town. So as to prove. By special use permits, post office, I didn't read it in further.
It should say postal-related services.
Yes. Fred, do you want to, I guess, money question?
The members of the, John, so the members of the planning commission, we have zoning amendments that are before us. Is there any questions or comments from members of the planning commission? Having a motion from a member of the planning commission to.
What do you want?
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brown, I have been engaged by Charlie and Mr. Lucic, representative, in some of their atmospheric regards to zoning matters in the town. And we could certainly, in light of the earlier discussion this evening, we certainly support the idea of the zoning amendment, particularly since it is, as I understand, the way it's crafted in would apply to any properties in any zoning district. So we would certainly support and urge its adoption.
Any other public hearings? Yes.
Here, each one. It seems to me that this is in the order of an enabling piece of legislation. Clearly, we're not going to have multiple post offices springing up all over the town of Washington. It is certainly evident, given the extent of the conversation that just went on, that we, if we're lucky, will get one post office in the town, and wherever that is, this zoning change will be applicable. So in that case, this seems really a one-off kind of discussion about a zoning change. It really is to enable the construction of a post office in the town of Washington should postal service and the developer and the town be able to get those things all together. So I would say strongly support doing this. It will probably only be used, if ever, once, and only for one site. So while this is the form that the attorney has recommended doing, because we don't know where that site might be, so that it's not misunderstood, I don't think anyone should leave tonight thinking that there's going to be a rush of post offices developed in the town of Washington. So I strongly support this change.
Then clarifications? Any other comments from the public? Close the public session. I'll perform for the planning commission, and now I see a motion.
I see a motion.
One second. Thank you. So roll call vote?
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Do you want to say that a little while?
So, just sort of clear, the form of the motion is to recommend approval of the zoning amendment to the town council.
Those in favor, please indicate.
She said.
Gail?
Aye.
I say aye.
Aye.
And just carry. With that, I will close the planning commission upon this meeting.
And, now, 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 we've come up to do the public, do we do a public hearing or the county council?
Or the county council.
Okay, so, on behalf of the county council.
Do I say, so, we need to have a motion to close the planning commission?
Well, there's a number, there's a number two, there's two kind of numbers to join here.
Excuse me?
I'm just.
All right.
Yeah, just checking.
So, the, there needs to be a motion for consideration of a special use permit in accordance with the new Article one four one K to amend a post office and postal-related services along the intersection of Old US Route two eleven, which is Warren Avenue and Leggett Lane, briefly described as point five eight five three acres, tax map twenty-eight dash one dash one one nine, presently owned by the town of Washington, but subject to a proposed contract of sale dated November eighth of two thousand and eighteen, to be landing close and properties incorporated. And I have, all right, a second?
Seven. You didn't ask for a comment?
I was just about to.
Oh, because you said, I thought you were making a motion.
So, is there any public comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would strongly urge the planning commission to consider either withholding a recommendation to the town council, or in fact recommending that the town council not approve such a special use permit. There need to be a number of findings that the council will ultimately be called upon to make in connection with a special use permit request that relates specifically to this property. And I submitted to the planning commission and the council members, since we're all present at the same time, that the commission and the council do not have sufficiently detailed plans before them to properly consider the special use permit requests that's before you tonight. The kinds of findings that the commission and the council have to consider are things like the impact of this proposed use, if approved, for this property, on the adjoining properties, the possibility that the approved use may create conflicting traffic patterns in that neighborhood or the vicinity of that property, the impact that this proposed use, if approved, on this property will have on the potential values of the adjoining properties and properties in the area of this property. I submit that at this point, without detailed plans from the developer, which I understand, unless I'm mistaken, have not been brought forward at this point, there simply isn't any way for the commission to properly consider, or for the town council to properly act upon, this kind of special use permit request, when all of those findings need to be affirmatively considered and made by the town council. So while the town council has approved the contract this evening, and that's fine, that can go forward, I would urge the planning commission to either withhold action or not move to approve. I would certainly urge the town council, so I don't repeat, strongly to consider that at this point, you simply don't have a sufficiently detailed plan from this developer to understand exactly what the impact of this proposed use will be in connection with this property. And because you can't have that kind of an understanding with this property, you have no idea what kind of an impact it will have in terms of traffic pattern, the impact on uses of the adjoining property. So I would urge, I would urge you to not act on the special use permit, or not approve the special use permit this evening.
Brad, can you state any traffic conflicts, access is off the existing.
The burden is not on, the burden is not on us, Mr. Bennett, to state if there won't.
If there's a problem, if there's a problem, state it with us.
No, the point is.
For the council.
The point is, there's no way for a single one of these people to make a determination on that.
And you know they haven't seen detailed plans.
Because you don't have any plan before you want.
Sure. We've reviewed on-site the layout with the developer.
You know, that's.
The access, there's some, you know, there's further review by BDOT on the traffic issue. That's not within purview of the town as to that issue.
Oh, absolutely it is, and considering it's special use permit, the town council can consider the traffic impact independent of whatever BDOT might or might not recommend. Surely, you don't, you don't think, BDOT trumps that decision-making over the, over the town council.
On Route two eleven, maybe.
Yeah, no, the town council can certainly consider, and even have, ask the applicant to, you know, provide information to BDOT and allow BDOT to make a recommendation one way or the other. But ultimately, it's the decision of the town council in the context of special use permit.
Gary, Gary, oh, I'm sorry, it's yours.
Again, I hesitate to ever rise in rebuttal to Mr. Brown, and I would agree with the factual accuracy of everything you said. However, a town council is the legislative body of this jurisdiction, and in your legislative sovereignty, you can weigh the benefits and the costs to the town of Washington. There's a lot that's unknown. I depend somewhat on both the developer's experience and the wisdom of the postal service not to ever agree to anything that would be in and of itself a hazard or an obstacle to the well-being of the citizens of the town. There could be some coincidental things that we would wish would be different, but heaven knows, we've all found things about the current location that we wish could be different, and yet we want a post office in this town. And so we deal with those ancillary burdens to our parking and our walking and everything else, because we want a post office in the town of Washington. It would seem to me that as a legislative purpose, well-known, the will of the citizens of the town of Washington, which I no longer am one, and many citizens of the county of which I am one, you could, in your legislative sovereignty, choose tonight to say that the goal of maintaining the post office, the chance of achieving the goal of maintaining the post office within the jurisdiction of the town of Washington, is sufficiently important to the citizens of the town that you're prepared to move forward tonight to approve this. Notwithstanding the fact that there could be things down the road that we all wish would be different, but I can't imagine one being substantial, that when you weigh it in the balance, that the outcome that Mary Ann said was very, very clear, to miss the opportunity to retain the post office because of concerns about what could or could not potentially develop, I think would be a mistake.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments opposed to public hearing, fortunately?
Many of the issues that we raised, I respect everybody who's sat here, they're technical issues of the nature that is resolved at the site plan stage. This is the zoning stage, pretty general thing, and you get down to the traffic issues and traffic counts and all that, there's, I don't think there's any issue that's going to overburden two eleven, so move forward on that basis as far as any technical movements of a vehicle of a particular size, all that, that's the site plan issue, it's resolved by the engineer, they measure everything up by the foot. So, that's something that's entirely separate from this proceeding. Those issues will be considered and addressed if the planning commission and the council should go forward at the zoning.
May I just say, Mr. Chairman, yes. I appreciate that, of course, lots of details get worked out at the site plan review and approval stage, but it's nevertheless the fact that it's incumbent upon the deciding decision-making body, whether it's the Board of Zoning Appeals, if you're over in the county, or whether it's the town council, if you're sitting in the town, to have sufficient detail before you at this stage, even at this stage, to make a determination that the proposed use is not going to be in conflict with existing patterns, traffic patterns, that the proposed use is not going to have an adverse impact on the values of adjoining properties, and that the proposed use is otherwise an appropriate one. Without some kind of more detailed plans before you than I believe that council and the planning commission have before you at this point, I simply submit that you don't have enough information to be able to make that decision. Ultimately, the commission and the town council may decide that that, that in fact, that half acre lot is appropriate. But before you have those kinds of details, now, you don't, I'm not talking about the kinds of details that get necessarily get worked out in the site plan approval process, but some more details about having an idea of the size of the structure, the siding of the structure, the general flow of traffic in the area, the expected amount of visits to the property each day, the large trucks that will come to the property, you know, lighting and utilities and all of those other things, those are things that are appropriate for the town council, even at this stage of the proceeding.
Appropriate but not required.
To consider, not required, but if the council members take seriously their, you know, their role in this process, this specific process of making the determination.
I would say.
Yeah, no, I'm not being, no, I'm not intending to be insulting at all, just the opposite. I think all these council members are serious about considering these things, and I, you know, I, I understand Mr. Angel's point about considering the overall impact that the council's going to consider of having or not having a post office in town. I know that it's an important subject to, you know, to all of the citizens of the town, and a lot of citizens that don't live in the town. But, but it can't be that, and it's not supposed to be, that the town council, in considering special use permit, should sort of generally think that because this, this general idea is a good thing for the town, but that doesn't mean that they still shouldn't, and I know that they do, consider the, consider the very real impact that that specific project on that specific piece of property would have on the properties that are around it. And that's, and I, again, simply, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, I'm saying that the council and the planning commission don't have enough information to know whether it's a bad or good idea.
Brad, point back, the immediately adjacent property owners are not here to oppose it. The property owner on the other side of Leggett Lane is not here to oppose it. You're here on behalf of a client on the other side of the federal highway to oppose it. If there's a site that's ripe for traffic, it's on the most major federal highway, the federal highway, US two eleven, is on that road, doesn't get any better than that.
With that, we will close the public hearing unless there are any more, unless there are any more comments on the public. Yes, sir.
Just to call, I think it is a special use permit, so hopefully we'll come back in and talk about special use of, it's a living museum, and things didn't go forward with the post office, the use of that, having got a lot of development, it is a special use. And I would at least expect, and I think a lot of small places, my family helped me in the late, like, last nineteen eighty, the use, the special use, to not even see a site plan, to see how, just from a layout standpoint, how things are going to be used there, even just a basic.
Seen that, seen that, walked on the site, with the developer, seen the layout, seen the parking.
Well, I'm saying, from a public standpoint, that's why I asked you before, what was in the paper, haven't seen anything, I'm unable to see.
This is general zoning, this is general zoning, Ben, it's not site plan.
No, but we're talking about special use.
You're welcome to look at all the details of the site plan, if this should go forward.
Any other public comments? No, then we'll close that. There is a motion at this point.
Mr. Chairman, before the motion can be considered to make a recommendation to the council, there are four standards applicable to this special use permit, that each of these have to be considered by the planning commission and further the finding made by majority vote on each one.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote. So I'll read each one, ask the question, and then the planning commission will have to vote on it. Town government body will issue a special use permit if it finds a use for which permit is sought, A, first one, will not be hazardous or injurious to or in conflict with the predominant character of the neighborhood. of the neighborhood considering the size and locations of the use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved, the site layout and access for it. How say each of you?
I abstain, yes, sir.
Yes.
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 I abstain.
B, will not adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use.
Yes.
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 C, will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest of property or improvements in the neighborhood, but to the quiet enjoying property improvements in the neighborhood.
Yes.
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 And the last standard, will be in accord with the provisions of the ordinance and planned use and development and body area as well as in accordance with such comprehensive plans or parts thereof from time to time adopted by the governing body. How say each of you?
Yes.
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 And now, the motion to make affirmative recommendation to issue the special use permit before the planning commission go forward.
I will propose the motion. Can you make the motion? Here, I'm going to raise the motion. You'll have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. This is the second. This is another roll call vote. So, Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
I abstain.
With that, I believe that...
You say yes.
I said yes. With that, I believe we are at the close of the planning commission meeting. May I have a motion to close the meeting? Do you have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please indicate if you're saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. All right. John, council meetings still occurring. So, we have a force of recommendation from the planning commission. Item number one, number two, in the infirmary. Now, we need a public hearing for the town council. So, on behalf of the town council, we'll open a public hearing on the subject which we have just discussed.
So, would be the first question, the amendment to the zoning order is to permit post offices related to postal services by special use permit in all funding districts. Yes, that's the topic of discussion here.
All right, public hearing is open on that. Any comments? If none, then I close the public hearing, recognizing that the public has already discussed this subject and had an opportunity to discuss it. So, we close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation?
For the first one?
For the first one. Should I restate it?
To adopt. To adopt the amendment to the...
To adopt the amendment, Article 1-41, otherwise known as item 1. Do you make that motion?
We have any discussion?
We have a discussion. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that this subarticle K for post offices and related postal services, K, that that spot also is for planned unit development, it's listed as K2, 1-4-1K.
So, the D to D, if this is adopted, would anything on?
To the next. Yeah. Okay.
Any other observations? If not, I suggest we have a roll call vote. We'll go through the, or do the second one, the second one, okay. Okay, so item...
Next question.
Number two.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, on this question, there's no special findings required, you just have a motion to approve or disapprove in a roll call vote. I'm sorry, special findings on it. Next question.
Do you have a motion?
Okay.
So, just a motion to approve or disapprove the amendments in both of them.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so...
So, let's hope.
I'm afraid you seconded me.
Yeah, I seconded you.
Yes.
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 Okay, so then now we're on item number two here. Is that right?
You can have it on.
Any, well, let's, do I have a motion to approve and then one discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Public hearing?
Public hearing. Sorry, you're right, you're right. Public hearing on item number two. Let me open it up for the public.
Let me just state what the question is, so it's in the record. Four joint sub, Article K was adopted by the council, so this would be consideration of special use permit for post office and postal-related services on the lot at the intersection of Old US Route 211 and Leggett Lane, 85853 acres, tax map 20A-1-119.
Okay. So, we've opened a public hearing on that. There's no comment. We're going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion that we have a special use permit in accordance with the new Article 141K to permit a post office and postal-related services on the lot at the intersection of Old US Route 211 and Leggett Lane, briefly described as 85853 acres, tax map 20A-1-119.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay.
It would be the consideration of the general standards under 6-1-1, but the issuance of any special use permit, the town governing body may issue a special use permit defined for the use for which the permit is sought. A, will not include on these individual, A, will not be hazardous or injurious to or in conflict with predominant character of the neighborhood considering the size and location of use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved, the site layout and access for it. How say each of you?
Yes, here.
Yes.
B, will not adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use.
Yes.
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 C, will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest of property or improvements in the neighborhood, but to the quiet enjoying property improvements in the neighborhood.
Yes.
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 D, will be in accord with the provisions of the ordinance and the planned use and development and body area as well as in accord with such comprehensive plans and parts thereof from time to time adopted by the governing body.
Yes.
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 Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the special use permit is now before the council for a roll call vote.
Yes. Approve starter.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Thank everybody for their thoughtfulness, comments, and patience. So, those are both approved. Next item of business, old business. Council's offered for sale, as is the two-story frame structure on parcel three at the intersection of Old Route 211 and 522 and Leggett Lane, containing 85853 acres, tax map 20A-1-119, subject to an agreement satisfactory to council to remove this structure by February 4th, 2019.
February 14th, 2019.
2019, I jumped ahead with my eye there. 2019. And to give reasonable assurance that such structure will be preserved or restored, if no such offer is received or therefore accepted by council, such structure may be razed or demolished. This is a reiteration of what was said, I believe, at the last month's meeting. We are essentially offering this building for sale to the highest bidder at a minimal amount of money. If it were to be removed, and if there is no interested party, then we consider raising and demolishing. There's nothing actually to be done among this, Mr. John. We're just reiterating this to the public and if anybody might be interested, taking the public one more time that this building is available at a minimal cost if someone would like to move it and save. Anything to be said off of, to be discussed? Okay. Then we will move on. Item two, B, on old business, review and possible authorization of a public hearing on Etonman Eagle Gay Street application for the vacation of Gay Street Stub Street. This is a subject that has been discussed for quite some period of time. The current status of the... Thank you very much. John, in purpose, guys, would you describe it?
I've raised some questions that have been, people over the years, bringing the council's attention, some situations involving the Eagle property. And there was some draft language which I felt didn't necessarily address all the town issues, maybe that particular piece of property. But Mr. Brown and I have conferred on that, and Miss Egon has signed a statement that afforded the dollar by the end of that committee, saying that she will, in her heirs and success with title related by water marriage, will keep the property in good state of repair and clean for the term of the type of thing, which I think addresses the issues that have been raised and passed before council. And then, I had drafted a proposed ordinance here that could be advertised. The other points would be that if council wishes to move forward, need to set a time limit in which to close, otherwise the ordinance would not be void. It would be, I think I split it into days. And then, the last thing is, there's got to be some documentation, you know, just in a form or substance satisfactory to the council and approved as a form by the town authority, which has to be done, has to be done. So, if that's agreeable to Mr. Brown and his clients, I would recommend to the council its consideration as to the form of the transaction that seems to be in proper form now, substances to be debated. Purchase price is $7,000.
So, our decision at the moment is whether or not to have a public hearing on this next month, presumably next month. So, that's really, I think, is there discussion, discussion called on us?
Is that what you're recommending, Tom?
I think all the issues have been addressed and explored, all the questions about the public purpose in the future, and the answer seems to be exactly not. And the rights of other people for access has been addressed. And so, I think all the issues about the Seagull's property have been addressed. From what I know of the situation, all of the necessary issues have been addressed, and it's in a proper form that we consider by the council.
Well, no further discussion, I will propose again.
My mind, I had four points. One, that Gay Street is not extendable, that at a previous time, the rights to Gay Street that went across an adjoining piece of property were relinquished, and so, Gay Street itself is not extendable. Second, there is, despite that, or despite that point, there isn't a significant topographical obstacle that would make it very difficult to obtain Gay Street and therefore engage with the Gay Street Stub fairly useless as a thoroughfare. Three, the town is receiving your enumeration for this Stub Street vacation. And four, and this should be kept in mind, that there is replacement of an empty deteriorate shed with the potential of a residence. And I think of all those points, I think it's favorable action for the council to take.
Let me just mention one other thing. The council did adopt a resolution as establishing the criteria by which these applications could be considered, and I think council discussed that at the last meeting, so anything that I can add?
All right, I would, anything else? I would propose, I make a motion that we have a public hearing on January, January 14th. I propose that you all have a public hearing on January 14th, 2019, which I can come to only for the initial, I believe, because we'll not have a discussion.
John, there's ample room in the views.
That's right.
There's ample room here in the views.
Oh, that's true. All right, so we have a motion, a second. I don't know if it's roll call or not, but it's just a draft.
I'll say yes, and I hope that with, in January, we can finalize everything and let this transaction be signed. I think it was done on extensively, much to your dismay, and hopefully, we can all smile and shake hands and say it was a good decision for the town. So, I definitely, I'd say we can get this done and get it resolved in January, once and for all.
Yes.
And I would echo, although I don't have a vote, I would echo that approach the next reading. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, I look forward to having a public hearing on this process.
All right. John, we're sort of moving here. Consideration of possible authorization of a joint public hearing with the planning commission on a draft planned unit development ordinance. Mr. Cap?
Planning commission held a meeting this afternoon, a public side meeting at 5:30. We waited until 6 o'clock until we had a forum. And the planning commission looked at the proposed ordinance and sought to address the two concerns that had been raised by members of the planning commission. The first was, was the sewer ordinance applicable to the PUD? And the answer is yes, the sewer district is an organic boundary, and therefore, it can be flexibly enlarged to include the planned unit development. The second concern was a bit more substantial, and that was whether the planning development would be under the design standards of the ARB. And the planning commission received input from the town council, SEL, on three aspects. First, properties in the town and the historic district would be required to follow ARB guidelines. Secondly, properties on the entryway quarters outside the historic district would be subject to ARB. to ARB guidelines. But properties not on the corridors and outside of the historic district will not be subject to ARB guidelines unless the historic district is extended. And so we bring that conundrum to attention.
That conundrum being the last point?
That last point is that if you have a property that is not considered on the entryway corridor and is outside the historic district, for instance, a property that might come by way of a boundary line adjustment, for instance, it would not be subject to ARB unless the historic district is extended.
What is your thinking on that? Are we discussing this now?
Sure. I want to ask if members of the planning commission want to expand upon it.
I think your thinking is that we feel that the ARB is a guardian of the historic feel and character.
And the aesthetics.
Of the aesthetics of the town. And so I think there's comfort to be derived from the fact that any kind of PUD would have to be subject to the similar look of the rest of the town. And that would be true if a PUD was in the historic district. The corridors would have to be designated as official corridors, overlays, historic district overlays, and then that could apply to the corridors, meaning the roads into the town up to a certain point. We think maybe even part of what is back to the Rush River. But there would be, if there were boundary adjustments, and we know that a lot of this discussion about PUDs is actually about putting PUDs on areas that are now adjoining town, they're not quite in the town, so there might be boundary adjustments, those PUDs in those areas that were to become part of the town, but a PUD for boundary adjustment would not be subject to ARB guidelines if they weren't in the historic district. So the ARB guideline is very much tied to the historic district. So we were concerned about, if you have, I think we all saw the idea of PUDs, but we were concerned about how do we protect the aesthetic feel of what might be new PUDs visible perhaps to all members of the town, we're a very small community, if they're not subject to the same guidelines of the rest. So we wanted the town council to be aware of this and perhaps think about ways that we could overcome that. There is a draft, there is a paragraph in the ordinance, draft ordinance, which mentions the role of the ARB, but as Mr. Bennett explained to us, that would not apply to a PUD in an area if it wasn't in the historic district, even if it was in our town and visible to be. And so we think that's an area of some concern.
Unless it's in the corridor.
Unless it's in the corridor, but the corridors also have to be designated as corridors. We have to go through a process to get our corridors accepted as official corridors to a historic district. And if that were to be the case, then the corridors would be subject to ARB. But there's still some areas that wouldn't, so that's our conundrum, is small.
Are those part of this part of the town?
Part of what we're talking about with the PUD is that if, again, there are three different kinds of properties that we're talking about. If you have something that is within the town currently, it is, 99% of it is within the historic district. And so that is already covered by the ARB. If we were to, by basis of boundary line adjustment, have a property outside that wishes to submit a planned unit development special permit, then they would be subject to ARB guidelines if they are on the historical entryway overlay. And that's basically what that means precisely, whether it's the properties adjoining, whether it's that area that can be seen from the corridor, from the entryway.
And you mean by the Warren Avenue and Main Street?
Warren Avenue, that's what I'm saying. But there is the potential that there may be subsections or units of a property, subunits of a property, that are not visible from the road, that may not be considered part of that entryway corridor, and they would be outside of the town. Those properties, there are not a lot of them, but those properties right now would not be subject to ARB standards unless the town extends the historic district to include the entire property. And that's a process.
Now, is that one of those properties would be out of thought or step?
Uh, I see.
Or right there, you can't really say?
No, I think it would be something back in, behind Gay Street, for instance, or anything that's not going to be visible from.
Section 20, Charlie Town.
20.
Part of Charlie's, part of.
Part of this knee property.
Well, can I ask a question of your own, of course? Is...
Before you ask that question, I think one other point that I need to make that, and again, members of the planning commission, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think the ordinance, proposed ordinance, as it goes to you, is one that is acceptable, but there is this one issue, and it's a very important issue.
I get it, I think it's very important. Let me just see if I understand them. Is it, are you saying that one is a matter of policy, the town may not care, if I may put it so literally, how something is designed on a chunk of property that you can't see, or, does the town either cares or doesn't care? Or are you saying, under existing rules and ordinances and so on, there's nothing that currently gives the town authority over those?
The only rights that we would have is to have over these properties in terms of bringing them within the guidelines of the ARB is if we extend the historic district.
That's not true.
And this is why we have Mr. H.
I've been listening carefully. What the mayor said is true, that under currently existing rules, regulations, ordinances, if it's not within the historic district or these designated areas that might be the entryways, then the ARB lacks jurisdiction, it's outside the ARB's jurisdiction. So we have boundary line adjustments, then the ARB, if neither of those first two, if it's not in the historic district, and extending the historic district, I understand, I would defer, is not one of the things that the town council really wants to even have to think about doing, it will kill the PUD, because the process of extending the historic district is going to be much more complicated than a developer's willing to put up with. So I would say let's not talk about that. The area ways where we come into the town, that's an overlay, that's doable, but there is this potential, the third category, of newly acquired town property that's not within the historic district and not within the overlay. The ARB would have no jurisdiction to review, the process would not extend to those properties, nor would they be able to apply their standards. However, as part of the PUD application process, which is in this document, the town council can impose whatever conditions they want on the developer, such as it has to meet the currently applicable ARB standards. The only thing that is a little issue is who would actually do the reviewing, what would that process look like, and who would make the determination to recommend to council that they're within the guidelines? Clearly, you could appoint a consultant, you could, I think, although again, I will defer, there is, maybe Patrick said it once, there is a line or two somewhere in the ARB Enabling Act that says that in appropriate search circumstances, the town council can apply to them for their consultation. I'd want to find that before I stipulate it's a fact. But point of fact, when this PUD application comes forward with its development plan, town council absolutely can say, as a condition of going forward, any new construction on that property would have to meet currently applicable ARB standards within historic district, without extending historic district or actually having the ARB jurisdiction. You have jurisdiction as the legislative body to impose whatever level of standards you want. You could go well above, I wouldn't recommend it necessarily, but you could impose yet more strict architectural review standards on a development under PUD than would now be legal under the ARB.
And just to summarize what you're saying, then, is that the town council would have the authority to bring in the ARB as a consultant or someone else who's a consultant?
I believe that's true.
To ensure the guidelines?
That's an opinion, but point of fact about your authority of the council, I think, is...
Right.
I think that's very important, but it would be nice to get, John, Bennett, do you, do you reflect?
Quite by happenstance, I think that, I agree 100% with your thoughts, this is one of these things I never thought of, I'm glad it's ready, but quite by happenstance, the ordinance addresses that already. Quite by accident, seven, all new structures meet the design standards within the most recent edition of the Architectural Review Board's Guidelines to New Construction, so it doesn't say it's going under ARB, it says it has to meet those standards.
Okay, and as earlier, there was some question about whether that would apply to area within the land, within the town, but not within the historic district, and now you're saying it does apply to a DOD, applies to a wall?
That language would apply to any project.
Okay, all right.
What, what they didn't tell us is not part of this, because I thought that the town was...
If the, if the boundaries of the...
Oh, they, oh, right, okay. But that's what you said now, yeah, I heard you say really 99%.
I think there are a couple of small boundary line adjustments that happen after the historic district was established.
You mean a little part, right?
Like I said, 99%.
Yeah, can't hold that.
Some of this area that's been talked about.
Yeah, I understand the boundary line, I get that, I just didn't understand existing, okay.
And when you talk about the, Nancy, I want to make sure people get your point a minute.
What discussions have taken place about boundary line, mine, adjustments with owners of the property?
None. We're talking about, yeah, future.
We're just talking future potential.
Can you talk about the entry corridor? So those have to get tested, and...
Well, none of this, the PUD is already addressing that with the language that's in it.
Okay, so we're addressing the entry corridor, and so that still is limited to...
No, it's addressing all the different properties.
Right, right. With town boundary, or with entry corridors, the authority goes up to wherever the town boundary is. So the entrance off to 11, that part which is county land, it's in the county, not in the town.
Right.
We have no jurisdiction over, so someone could just be over the line, put up purple house, you know.
We have no trouble.
It's a purple house, it's part of the ARB.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying is that, we don't have the influence or the control if it is outside of the established town boundaries unless we do a boundary system.
If I may, in Culpeper, the town actually went to the county and asked the county to adapt this, adopt this overlay history and made it reviewable by the county planning commission to enforce certain standards on the entrance corridors to the town corridor. And I think the same approach could be used here. You do it in the county, the county has a lot of the same interests that the town has.
Yeah, so an entrance from 211 in, coming up Warren Avenue or from Main Street coming in, we could approach the county and they would say, you know, you think that's a good idea that those standards of air rights ability are adopted? Doesn't necessarily mean that it's required, you're saying, but it would be encouraged?
None of the ordinance required to, it's just like having an ARB, except in the county it goes to the planning commission, since they don't have an ARB.
Okay, okay.
Can I call?
We call with everyone.
Well, it's still your meeting.
Oh, I didn't see Sharon's hand though. Oh, Sharon.
Yes, sir. I was wondering if people in the area of this corridor right here don't want to be part of the town or regulated by the town, because I have a few relatives in that area that, I mean, they have a nice house and everything, but they may not want to be regulated by all of the town whatevers. So how does that work if, if the people that own the property, even not if you go toward Piedmont or Bottom Stack, if they don't want to be included in the town?
A boundary line adjustment is a, is an application from the property owner, so it is not an annexation, it is an opportunity if the property owner outside the town wishes to be in the town, that's what drives it, it is not the town that drives this process.
Good question.
And to note too, is that someone, if you have three properties in a row, it is possible and conceivable, property one says I want to be in the town, property two says I don't, property three says I want to be, property two could actually be technically not in the town and things sort out. It is done. It's not pretty in terms of how that all works, but it is done. So, you know, those things, but there, and also too, it's a very involved process, it is not done with a quick stroke of a pen. There's a lot of work that goes into any type of boundary adjustment by a town, an annexation or anything like that. So there's a lot of public hearing, there's a lot of...
And all of that is done to protect the property owner.
Yeah, bottom line is protect the property owners.
Ah, it's a great subject, it really is, but where do you want to go next, Brad?
So as I said before, but not clearly, I think the planning commission is comfortable with the consideration and authorization of a joint public hearing. We did not have a, we can't, we did not make that a recommendation, but it is up to the town council. We have looked at the planned unit development ordinance, and our only concerns were these. We addressed the one about the sewer, and then the second one, it appears through the benefit of having all the legal people in the community, that that is also addressed.
So there is, it'd be so stupid here, so there is a, an existing draft is, if you will, a final document from the planning commission that exists, so one could say, okay, here's what we're going to do.
Change one word, I think number seven from observe to meet.
Observe for what?
Observe to meet, number seven.
So they should enhance the, have a public?
Move on public.
Move on public hearing, a presumably joint, or not necessarily, but why not joint?
It would be... It would be joint in January, January 14.
Well, I'm in that kind of situation, I think it's up to you guys, but I think it makes sense to go ahead and have a joint hearing, which doesn't mean, sometimes as a hearing as we had tonight, is a public hearing, and at the same time, one makes a vote and soon thereafter, yes or no, this might be, become a subject that the hearing would be such that, you know, you want to have more discussion or something like that. So I would, I guess I'll make a motion if you want.
I'll say.
All right, go call out. Are there any more discussion on?
Does that mean that we can't make any changes, amendment to the board?
Well, depends on if there are material changes and it's been advertised, actually other than us.
So if we can't have wordsmith changes?
I have some, yeah.
On the assumption that those are grammatical wordsmith, I think we should probably bring them up for, for her to put on record, because we have to have them. them up for her to put on record now, since we have to have them.
Is that something you can offer up now or anything?
Yeah. All right, so do you want me to start?
Sure.
Okay, this is, this says an ordinance to amend zoning ordinances of the town, and I've got this, I'm not a legal lawyer, but it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So we should change that of the town on, an amendment to the zoning ordinance, singular?
Ordinance.
Uh, no, because there also is a sewer ordinance that's discussed in this document.
But it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance we're talking about. And within the zoning ordinance, did other ordinance, right?
Something like that.
So Mary Ann, what would the language be?
The title would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Singular.
Of the town, singular, of the town of Washington. And then where it says, whereas the planning commission and town council, after review and public comment, to better with the goals of the comprehensive plans, I think that should be singular, we just have one comprehensive plan. John, just let me know when you're ready.
I made an order.
Okay, and then where it says, in that same paragraph near the end, presently not available under strict application of, we have to add the word the, existing zoning ordinance singular. Okay, and then go down to paragraph that starts, now therefore be ordained by the town council, the town of Washington, Virginia, that the zoning, town zoning ordinance shall be amended by adding a new subsection, and we should change K to L, and then change it to L again in the next sentence.
Should be standards of Article 6.1-2.1, or is it 2.1?
No, it's 2.1, it should be 1.
Should be 2.1.
I think that's, I think that's a typo, that should just be...
6.1.
6.1-1, general standards.
102.
So 1-4-1L, town unit development subject to general standards of Article 6-1-1.
You take up the two. And then in the next sentence, 2, 6-1-1. When you're talking about the sewer service district, we're not talking about, do we need to add anything to that so that people will know that it's just Phase 1 and not Phase 2? I mean, like maybe...
The sewer, sewer service district ordinance was, when it was developed, the concentration was that that was the initial district to focus infill development in the town core. But at the same time, it was, I'll use the word organic, that it's something that could move and expand as it makes sense to have sewer service in areas, which presumably would be something that would be part of...
Would they be in the Phase 2 areas?
It's not Phase 2, it's probably Phase 1.
Oh, Phase 1.
Phase 1. Go with the Phase 1 sewer service.
Now, is the change on page 2 that is like, I guess, where it says limited, excuse if you put appropriate?
Right.
Is that, okay, that's, okay, that's going to be in there. I just had a question about this word harmonizes on page 3, where it says, PUD consists of single detached, semi-detached, attached to plus construction or combinations, they're all part of a development plan which harmonizes with the surrounding area. Does that need to be scaled out more by harmonizes with the surrounding area, does that mean?
This is, I tried to touch on this one, first presented the ordinance, but when you get into the details, there could be a lot of details and more detail to get into, when of course someone's looking at it, they're more likely to say, well, that other detail wasn't there, it's not applicable. Whereas if you use sort of general standard, you consider what's appropriate for that particular, precise specific application, it would more factor.
Mary Ann, are you helping?
So I need, just make this clear, being further, section 6-1-2 shall be amended by adding a new subsection, that's not a 1, that's a 2.
The 6.1, 4.
6...
6-1, dash L?
Dash 2, by adding a new subsection L, ordinance seems small, but so we put in a small L, it looks like a 1.
So it should be 6-1-2L?
2L.
Who would know?
I'm asking friends passing around sustenance to keep us going.
Do you know this problem, I think it was something, six years. Think about this stuff.
So with those lots of...
Three of their patients.
That's it.
So all their changes are taken care of, still a call. And... Should I not make a motion?
But you need to amend it to say add modify.
Add modify.
I think we made a motion. Yeah, I think you made a motion. He's amended the language as amended the motion.
Yes. So we have a vote. Mr. Schneider, yes?
Yes.
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 There you go. Big step forward, that's great. Very good statement. Okay, town office face review, we're going to sit at the end, folks. Now, all the reviews, is there really much to be said about them?
Not yet, I believe. Table one.
A table two. Okay. All right, under new business, discussion of saving the treasurer's salary effective January 4, 2019, and the request of the incoming treasurer, the town currently pays its treasurer $8,000 a year and has done so for, I don't recall how many years, right now, 20 years, whatever, some longer.
Longer than that.
Probably longer, whatever. She can speak for herself, but the incoming treasurer has graciously suggested that she should not actually be paid back, and the town, in its wisdom, going forward, either save money or use it in some fashion. So I...
May I say something?
Yeah, please.
In case, of course I welcome money, but the fact of the matter is, in recent years, more and more of the treasurer responsibilities have gone to the position of the town clerk. The mayor doesn't get a salary, I didn't feel that a treasurer with the shifting responsibilities should also get a salary. Therefore, I ask the town council to please eliminate that.
I would recommend that she get the same massive salary that the rest of the town council members receive.
Thank you. Was it $5 a week?
McDonald's.
The treasurer gets 10. I get $10 a month.
No, it's not.
He gets 10.
What did he say, the mayor? I'm sorry. Well, then I thought it was going to be 7.50, something between a council person and mayor.
So I made a recommendation, does that need to go in front of a vote?
Yes, it's money.
Money issue, does that need a roll call? So I've made a motion, I guess.
I second it.
Right?
Yes.
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 Great. Second, thank you, Dale.
That was very gracious, Dale. Well, you know, it's a fair thing.
You always go back to some other salary.
And a couple months, you'll be saying, wait a second. By February 11th.
All right, we also have on here, there's a planning commission vacancy, which is to say there will be one.
December 31st.
So December 31st, so people who might be interested in that, the next council will take responsibility. All right, I'm now going to open the public forum, a discussion on any subject going, going...
In response to the generous action taken by the incoming treasurer and the accolades rightfully paid to the current town clerk and the uncertainty about moving forward with how staffing the council will ultimately turn out a year or so from now, I would hope as just an interested party, that if the incumbent clerk remains for any period of time, council would seriously consider taking a look at the job description and the remuneration currently paid to the town clerk, and that going forward, as the issue of the appropriate duties of the town clerk are reviewed by the council, that rather than frittering away this kind of increase in the town budget, that it should be used quite seriously as a way to address some of the inequities of the past as to who actually does the work of preparing reports and financial statements, et cetera, et cetera. So I just hope that in a future day, that the alignment of work and remuneration would be somewhat more equitable than perhaps it has been in the past.
Any other comments?
Yes, I do. Laura, stop right now. I want to thank all of us for a great party last night.
And I want to thank everybody who chipped in this year. I had a lot more help decorating on the street and in here, and I really appreciate it.
Has the council acknowledged the parade committee or anything? Isn't this the night you usually do that?
I was just about to say just something.
Isn't this the meaning that the council generally acknowledges that the parade thanks to volunteers and everyone that helped make it to the parade?
Yeah, we do, and I was remiss, it's probably all not so imperfect, thank you.
Which is, the minutes could show.
And Judy left.
And Carol.
Carol, I mean, Judy and Caroline, so many people involved, I saw it, I think, and others, and I think Judy listed those in the new... But I guess I would say, it has been such a crazy, wonderful 10 days in terms of events. So many people contributed and it's so great. And I think everybody who was involved really had a very good time on the parade last night and a lot of, like, one of the things, nobody knows how much work goes into any one of them unless you've been schlep and stuffed around. But thank you, everybody. Thank you for, that was worth continuing the meeting, three minutes, well worth it. If not, I'm going to close the public forum, and then we intend to go into a closed session. Council will go to a closed session pursuant to provision, section 2.2-3.7...
They see you not yet.
But if not, the code of integrity, to discuss the name of town employee. Thank you all for attending, I prepared an evening, we got locked up. Thank you for last time. Thank you all. Mr. Angel? May I play you the particular or something?
It was worth waiting to tell you.
I have an interesting, everyone's moments, but I'm here to help. Got locked up? Don't press on the light bulb.